The Planning Department, we've received no calls or comments since first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Any questions? You have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item five, consider on second and final reading ordinance thirteen oh four oh seven, rezoning two twenty-five Kenway Street from RS ten, single family, to CL, local commercial. Sponsor is Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, to rehash this, this is a split parcel that's partially zoned as RS ten and partially CL. This would include the entire tract within CL. The intent is to remove an existing dilapidated commercial structure and build multifamily units on the property. The requisite rezoning has been approved by the planning commissions recommended by the planning department, and we've received no calls or comments since first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. You have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
This is a huge improvement over the current site, so this is well received.
Anything else? Seeing none, all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
And item six, consider on second and final reading ordinance thirteen oh four oh eight, the RAO, Redevelopment Area Overlay District zoning for three nineteen West Seventh Street. Sponsor is Mr. James Mills again.
Mayor and council members, this ordinance would create the city's first redevelopment area overlay district. It's on property that's located off of North Willow Avenue and Laurel Avenues between West Seventh and West Eighth Streets. It consists of approximately one point seven five acres. The underlying zone of the property is CL, and this site is located primarily within an area identified in our twenty thirty plan as being in need of redevelopment or revitalization, so it does meet the conditions established in the zoning code. The preliminary, this is an aerial photograph of the property, existing conditions. And the master plan, the preliminary RAO concept plan, which was submitted with the application for proposed overlay zone depicted the development of thirty-five townhomes. Approval of the plan included the increase in the density of ten, by ten dwelling units and the reduction of building setbacks on West Seventh, West Eighth Streets, and Laurel Avenue. And according to the submitted development schedule, all existing structures would be removed within sixty days of approval of the RAO zoning, which is tonight, with new construction beginning immediately thereafter and to be completed within one year. After the overlay zoning is enacted, or assuming that it's enacted tonight, the planning commission will consider for approval the final RAO plan and a preliminary subdivision plan at its meeting on Monday, May twentieth, two thousand and thirteen. And the final RAO plan is depicted on the screen. Of course, the final RAO plan must conform substantially with the preliminary plan, and we believe in this case that it does. Any modifications to this plan would have to be resubmitted. The planning commission has recommended that city council approve the establishment of the RAO district for the subject property for the development as indicated on the RAO plan. The planning department concurs of this recommendation, and we've received no calls or comments since first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. You have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
I'm looking forward to this. This is, I think, a real game changer as far as that part of the town. This is a gateway to the hospital, the university. This is going to be a beautification of that area over there, and it's a much needed, and like you said, it's an area that we've identified that needs to be improved, and this is definitely a proven. I want to congratulate the developers on doing this and coming up, and you and your department and the planning commission have done a lot of work on this to make it work and be successful from the very get-go.
We're excited about it.
Yeah, I want to just say thanks to the planning department, Mr. Mills, for coming up with the RAO overlay area that gives us some flexibility to do some things in some areas that need to be done, things need to be done. And, you know, we have a lot of events, and I'm pretty sure Tennessee Tech might even appreciate that. And that's coming from the west of the side of the state. That's exactly where they come into Tennessee Tech, is that street. So this was, I think this is a great thing for the city of Cookeville.
I'd just like to make a comment, too. I said this last time, but I want to just emphasize this again. I really think this is a historic day for Cookeville in our history. I think this is, as far as I know, and I've been here, I've been here quite a while now, this is one of those events where we've actually, where you've had the opportunity, we're private, we're private enterprise, and government has had a chance to get together and try to do something that develops our town. And there was a time we didn't have blighted areas, now we do, unfortunately. We're getting, we're getting bigger, and there's lots of benefits with that, but unfortunately, there comes blight with that. And I think this is a historic day, and I really hope this encourages other developers. Instead of Aaron, Aaron seems to be the one that's jumping on this, and I appreciate you doing this, Aaron, but I hope it encourages other developers to take advantage of this RAO districts that we have created, and I'd like to, I'm looking forward to seeing more of this. And thanks to the planning committee and all you guys doing what you're doing. Appreciate it very much.
Well, there's a lot of traffic on South Willow, or North Willow, I'm sorry, anyway, and this is just, will improve the looks in that area.
Anything from the audience? Seeing none, all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. On to new business. Hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance thirteen oh five oh nine, amending the budgets of the various funds and departments of the city of Cookeville for the fiscal year ended June third of two thousand and thirteen. Sponsor is Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and council members, I do have a few budget amendments to consider. I'll start with the general fund. We do have additional revenue to recognize over budget of three hundred and seven thousand and seven hundred and sixty-two dollars. That's primarily made up of additional collections related to delinquent property tax with principal and interest on that, roughly a hundred thousand dollars. Sell of a piece of property the city owned, eighty-nine thousand and five hundred dollars. A few grants that we also received this year, Governor's Highway Safety Office grant of forty-six thousand and six hundred and eighty dollars, and an internet crimes against children grant for fifteen thousand dollars. We also had a donation to the fire department, thirty-three thousand and eighty-two dollars. Additional expenditures this year in the general fund, we have various expenditures related to those grants, forty-six thousand and six eighty for the Governor's Highway Safety Grant, this fifteen thousand for the ICAT grant, also the grant or the donation to the fire department that's being used, I think, to purchase workout fitness equipment for the fire department. Other operating expenses, the police department related to salaries, eighty thousand dollars. Small items of equipment weapons that will be purchased by the police department before the end of the fiscal year, thirteen thousand and five hundred dollars. Re-roofing the, potentially re-roofing the depot, subject to later council amendment, or council item on tonight's agenda, that's sixteen thousand dollars. Improvements at the Heritage Ford Building that we've already done in-house, nine thousand dollars, and then some work comp claims in various departments. So total additional expenditures in the general fund of four hundred and five thousand and two hundred and sixty-two dollars. The next fund would be additional expenditures for our state street aid fund, which is fifty-five thousand dollars for engineering fees related to our STP paving project, and nine thousand dollars for the purchase of right-of-way for a cul-de-sac we're constructing off of Lee Seminary Road. So those, that's a total of sixty-four thousand dollars in expenditures for the state street aid fund. In our sanitation fund, we had a sale of a sanitation truck, that was fifty-five thousand and one hundred dollars, and we have additional expenditures for salaries and wages of thirty-one thousand and repair to a commercial sanitation truck of ten thousand, so a total of forty-one thousand dollars in increased expenditures for sanitation. The next fund we would need to amend would be our drug fund. We had additional revenue from confiscated properties of thirty-two thousand dollars and expenditures for vehicles for the police department of thirty thousand and four hundred and fifty dollars. And the last fund that I would ask you to consider is our employee insurance fund. We're self-funded. Claims this year roughly four hundred thousand dollars more than we had anticipated and budgeted, so that would increase the appropriations for that fund by four hundred thousand dollars. But I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments from council?
Yes, Mr. Davidson, would you explain the donation to the fire department? You told us about that, but I think others need to know about that.
Rich Froning, the world's fitness man, he had the opportunity to design a shoe, and Roger, you have to help me make sure I explain this right, he had the opportunity to design a shoe for Reebok. I don't want to get that wrong this time, but anyway, he had that opportunity, and then proceeds from the sale of that shoe, he was allowed to donate the money to any charity that he wanted to, and he chose the Cookeville Fire Department to donate that money to, to help with their fitness program.
Right, thank you.
You know he was a student firefighter for a while, don't you?
Yes, he was. He used to be a firefighter with the.
Another great example, just another great ambassador for Cookeville. Like, we had these leaders, these young leaders up here, it's just another example of great ambassador for Cookeville. I really appreciate that very much.
Those people making us look good.
I like meetings like this, Mayor.
Send more people out there to do some stuff.
I do have a question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you.
Mike, would you explain the, for the police department on the operating expenses under salaries, the eighty thousand dollars, was that, I'm assuming is that over, was that overtime?
No, no, that's actually as part of the city's benefits. When you retire from the city, there's compensation for unused time that you have on the books, and that's what that's related to.
Okay, very good. And then I think it's just, we, because, of course, we all know this, but the drug fund money, the, those, that revenue that we receive from that, that immediately was as an, related to an expenditure. Would you kind of explain that for everybody, that the folks that might be watching? That's money that we take from, from.
That's money that's confiscated during whatever arrest that's made, processed through the police department, it goes through the court system, the courts award that money back to the agency that confiscated it, and that's money that was awarded back to the Cookeville Police Department, and then that money's been used for police expenditures, items, you know, one-time purchases, we're allowed to use that money for one-time purchases, such as patrol cars or police cars.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Item eight, consider resolution thirteen oh five oh three, supporting Tiger grant application. Sponsor is Ms. Melinda Kiefer.
Mayor and council, we have been approached by the Upper Cumberland Development District with a federal notification of grant opportunity from the Department of Transportation. You can see it's a federal program. This is the fifth round of that transportation grant program. And after meeting with the development district and looking over the application and the federal notice, it was determined that the Bennett Road extension could very well be a viable project. So basically, before you tonight is a resolution to support the application to that grant. We don't have a dollar figure in there now. Obviously, we will already have our match money, if you will, committed into this project. So it's an opportunity for us to garner some additional revenue for that project should we be awarded. It is very competitive, and the deadline for this grant is June third. So the resolution, I believe, is in your books, and we would request your approval.
Thank you, Ms. Kiefer. Got a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments from council?
This money, I think in the, the grants for a hundred and twenty million, that goes nationwide, isn't it?
Right.
So it's all over the country where people are trying to get a grant.
Yes, sir. There's a hundred and twenty million allocated to the rural areas. We do have an opportunity occasionally, and this might be one of them, where we can either be metro or rural. So right now, we're trying to do research and determine which would best benefit our application as we go forward.
Anything else?
Thank you for watching out, getting, I mean, grants are just, I guess as Yogi Bear says, it's cash, which is just as good as money, right?
Yes, sir.
You know, Mr. Bear, if you would, please, Melinda, a lot of times with grants, we get a lot of these grants that come forward to us, and sometimes there's lots, there's some strings attached that, so we choose not, we choose not to apply for those grants, but would you, I mean, with this grant, there's really not a whole lot of strings attached. Is that correct?
Unfortunately, there are tons of them. However, we're going to be going through those processes anyway with this project, so we won't be adding any kind of arduous task on there. Our challenge is going to be scheduling. This money has to be allocated by a certain date in two thousand and fourteen, and so whether our project is basically shovel-ready by then will depend, and that's part of the selection criteria. So it'd be great if we can get this grant. If we are awarded, it doesn't, it will not alter the project.
I think that's what I wanted you to allude to, so thank you, Ms. Kiefer.
No additional hoops to jump through.
All right, anything else? Seeing none, all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Kiefer. Item nine, consider approval of T T U Make It in America Challenge grant application. Sponsor is Ms. Melinda Kiefer.
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm honored to stand here in representation of partnership, which we do very well here in Cookeville. We've been approached by the university in several discussions with President Odom and the engineering department, as well as other departments at the university, to find a way to possibly have a physical presence for the university at the Highlands Business Park. Through their research, they found an Economic Development Agency grant through the federal government that potentially, again, our partnership could be a great project for this. So I am going to leave the slides up here, and it is my pleasure to ask President Odom to come to the podium and talk to you about the goals and the visions we have for this project.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of the council. It's a pleasure to be with you this evening. It's a pleasure to be in Cookeville and have opportunities like this to talk about partnerships. Really going back to the time when I was even entertaining the idea of coming to Cookeville for this opportunity, I think on one of my first visits, I took, they gave me a tour of the Highlands Park and sort of speculated at that time what would be possible there and what would be a great opportunity for Tennessee Tech to have some leadership opportunities to help bring the kind of businesses and jobs to this community in the Upper Cumberland that we'd all like to see happen. This is that kind of an opportunity, quite honestly, the Make It in America Challenge is a competitive grant program, and like a lot of them coming out of Washington right now, it has a pretty short fuse on it, and so we've had to do a lot of scrambling. And I want to particularly congratulate Ken Curry and Steve Canfield and Francis Attonia, who are here with us tonight, on the work that they've done to put this project together in very short order with, obviously, multiple partners and a lot of moving parts, but they've done an excellent job in doing it. And the real emphasis of this project, I mean, there's a bricks and mortar piece to this, there's a matching component that Tennessee Tech is committed to trying to meet the cash match. What we're coming to the council tonight about is the land itself, to make it available for the university to actually build that building on, so that's, there's no cash or additional commitment from the city or the county that we're looking forward to at this point in time. It's just a matter of the property itself, to have access to that. But again, the idea, motivation here is to, is to create jobs and opportunities, and that's what this building would represent. So this, the building will be great, but it's simply a means to an end, and that end is about, about bringing more jobs to the area. So for technical details in the proposal itself and what all is involved in the project, I'd be glad for Dr. Curry or any of the other colleagues with us tonight to answer those questions, but if there's questions I can answer, I'd be glad to.
Any questions?
Go ahead.
Actually, I do have a question. A lot of times I'll just make comments, but I do really have a question, mostly because I'm fascinated by this, after kind of reading this and up on it, I'd just like a little bit more, just kind of feel me, because this is, like, it says, "The regional innovation centers will host general purpose innovation laboratories in three general areas." It talks about information technology, biomanufacturing, and mechatronics and automation. Could you elaborate a little bit more on that? I find that fascinating, I'd like to hear.
Ken, you want to?
I'd like to hear about that. And I think the folks that are, might be watching would like to hear about that, too.
Let me just introduce myself. I'm Ken Curry, I'm director for the Center for Manufacturing Research at Tennessee Tech. And really, the innovation labs that we've got in mind, the, from an IT standpoint, we're actually going to try and make a small part of the building and actually be kind of a mini data center for students to actually learn about how do you manage the different resources that you have in a data center, the storage, the processors, even the HVAC that's required for that, because it's not a, it's a pretty energy-intensive process. But the other asset of that IT data center is actually to drive some new startup companies that, there's a company that is here in Cookeville that has been working with somebody else in Oak Ridge, we're familiar with them, we worked with them, and they came to us last year, they said, hey, we need some place to have some server space. And, you know, it was difficult for us to do that necessarily, but this would be a kind of a neutral site to allow people to lease that kind of infrastructure, have some startup, some incubator space, and really to drive some innovation coming out of our university, from student groups and capstone courses, to where they can actually utilize resources and actually entertain the thought of starting up companies. There's a recent report by the Kaufman Foundation that the very first observation they made was that most innovation coming out of universities is really coming from students. They seem to be, have a much higher risk profile than the faculty do. Maybe because they don't have anything to risk, but, but that's one part of it. The other part, the biomanufacturing, I think, is going to be phenomenal, it's going to be a registered good manufacturing practice for biomanufacturing. So this will be an opportunity, an open source lab to basically train students and professionals in what are some of the requirements that you have in creating cell lines, or, you know, when you're working with proteins, what kind of good practices do you need to entertain? And in looking at Life Science Tennessee, their workforce development plan for the state of Tennessee, this was the number one item that they recognized was a deficiency in the state, was that there's no good manufacturing practice that students are involved in. There are usually little labs in different research areas, but they're really not trained in what are all the quality control and other kind of practices that you need in a pharmaceutical company or some other biomanufacturing company. So we'll have about three thousand square feet where we'll probably, we'll have that all set up for entertaining additional courses, certificates, that we can train students and professionals on, as well as to try to drive innovation from our biomolecular engineering program. And then the third area is in advanced manufacturing, mechatronics and controls, and really, Steve Canfield is the one that, and maybe, Steve, can I just ask you to talk a little bit about that, because that's the one, but he's the expert.
Yes, thank you. I'm Steve Canfield, professor in mechanical engineering, and I'm also strategic planner for Advanced Manufacturing Research Group, working with Ken on this activity. Relative to mechatronics, automation control, that touches really on the large majority of the industries in our, in our region. And there are several initiatives within that area of manufacturing that we want to pull in here. One is additive manufacturing capabilities, there's a large center in Oak Ridge, we want to enhance that, also advanced capabilities and controls, mechatronics. The lab facility will enable both innovations from Tennessee Tech to start transitioning to work hand-in-hand with companies in our region, and also allow companies to start new enterprises, have space where they can spawn a small development activity, students or faculty, in some collaborative effort to start, start some type of entrepreneurial activity in that area, and that's true also for the biomanufacturing as well as the IT sector.
Thank you. So, so, well, just to comment, just to, correct me if I'm wrong, but what I'm hearing is that's, through these innovations that this center is going to do, it's going to be like drawing a moth to a flame, it's going to be, your, your idea is, is to bring these corporations, these cutting-edge, cutting-edge folks out here because of the innovations that this center is going to provide, but not only does it do that, but what I'm hearing is it also, it helps existing with the, with the automation and mechatronics portion, it helps existing businesses perform better, and bottom line, make, make more money with less effort. Is, am I hearing that right for my simple healthcare brain?
Exactly. In our executive summary, we have this push-pull strategy, and you've alluded to both. The push strategy is, you know, Tennessee Tech is this nationally-recognized institution with very significant research and educational developments, and it's, the research is all the way through faculty, graduate and undergraduate students, and that research is going out, but it's to some degree leapfrogging our region, and that's not good. We need to encourage that. So this center will anchor those activities, you know, and it's a, it's a double, it's a double advantage, one advantage, of course, is the region, the second advantage is to help our faculty bring their research to fruition, to enhance our intellectual property implementation strategy. The pull portion you talked about is actually with this investment, bringing, bringing groups in, bringing innovation in, particularly the biomanufacturing. I'd like to say one other thing, these three areas have been identified in past reports, particularly the Pathways to Prosperity Report, that has identified these as three critical areas, and we have at our university concentrations in each of these three areas that will be enhanced, as well as the technology training centers and the community center, community colleges.
Well, thank you. I'm proud, and this is my comment, I'll shut up for a while now, let my other council members talk, but I'm just really proud to be able to, I'm going to vote, certainly I'm going to vote yes for this. I mean, that land we have is very valuable, but I think what, what you're entertaining, what Tennessee Tech is entertaining is also, is also very, very valuable, and I appreciate the opportunity, city council member, to be, to be a part of this. And we haven't got the grant yet, but I, I'm hoping the people that hear this are hearing what I'm hearing and jump on it right away, because this is, sounds wonderful, and thank you for your hard work on this.
I'd like to comment, this is very exciting and new. This is great that the university, we as the government, in a marriage of trying to get business and equality of life, it's about growth, and I want to congratulate President Odom, Steve, Ken, for all the hard work you're doing. This is innovative, you know, you know, it's almost like thinking out of the box, we're, you know, it's positive, this is good news, you know, and definitely you're going to have my support, because this could be a game changer for our community. And thank you for reaching out. This is, you know, we live in an area up here that, you know, there's cooperation between different agencies up here that a lot of communities are jealous of us, because we can work together, because we have a common good, goal, to do the good for the community. And thank you for stepping up and being a positive influence in our community.
We, as a council, cannot create jobs, but we can create the environment to attract jobs, and you are helping us to do this, and we thank you very much.
President Odom?
Yeah, I just make a couple of quick comments to follow up on some of that. About forty percent of the undergraduate engineers in Tennessee are, come out of Tennessee Tech. It's not a well-known fact, I don't think. And seventy percent of those, we know this, seventy percent of those graduates of Tennessee Tech in engineering actually stay in the state of Tennessee, which is pretty remarkable. Unfortunately, not enough of them stay here in Cookeville, in the Upper Cumberland, and that's a lot of what this kind of project can help us do. A lot of communities around the state and around the southeast would love to have that kind of access to ready-to-go-to-work workforce. We've got it here, we've just got to find a way to keep them here and give them career opportunities that they're looking for. You know, this, this center, I think, will address at least two, probably all three legs of a stool in terms of creating jobs, and that's innovation, being able to grow our own, to retain the existing jobs in the area at a greater rate, and also to help recruit jobs to the area that we don't currently have, and so that's, that's why I'm excited about this, and do appreciate your support.
Dr. Odom, thank you. Thanks a lot. I just wanted to point out that, thank you for bringing this forward, and everybody that worked on it, Dr. Curry and Steve, I know the chamber's here as well, and Dr. Bell, thank you. But, you know, when we can, when we can work together, you know, the university, the city, the county, the chamber, the Highlands, we're a tough team to beat, I believe, and this, like Councilman Woodford said, this is a game changer. It can be a big game changer, and sometimes these opportunities, we just have to jump all over them. It is such a game changer that even if the, the grant, hopefully it works out, but if it doesn't, you know, this is something that we still need to think about, we still need to think about this, because this is, this park and the university is a lot of our future, and we need to make, give it every opportunity, like you said, we have to, we have to provide opportunity for people to. Like you said, we have to, we have to provide opportunity for people to create jobs. That's what we do, and we need to, we need to provide that.
And the environment, Mr. Mayor, if you would, please. Right now, we have the environment to create places like this. So, if this grant doesn't go through, it's just going to be something else. It's just going to be something else. I promise you, knowing my council members, that this, that our cooperation with Tennessee Tech and with the county and with all these parties involved will continue. So, if we don't get this grant, no, no big deal. It's a big deal, but it's not that big a deal, because we'll find something else.
We'll keep working.
Absolutely.
First off, do we have a motion on the floor?
Yeah.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, sorry.
That's good.
I didn't want to forget that part.
Mayor and council, so we get to the specific request on this. We're not doing a resolution or anything, but we'll just reflect it in certified minutes. Currently, we've just identified Site H as, from our concept plan. Mr. Shipley and I met with the group, and Site H is appropriate for this use, is appropriate in the level of, I think, competitive marketing of our current sites. You know, we have others that obviously are larger, have more visibility, and we would want to reserve those as we go forward in our recruitment efforts. So, that is what we're asking for tonight, and the county will be doing the same on Monday night.
Melinda, I did read, I think, that if they do not, if the grant is not received, then that kind of voids this.
Yes, ma'am. That is correct.
I almost hate to say this with so much intelligence in the audience, this is a no-brainer.
He's our comedian. I say we go get it done.
Thank you.
Ready to vote, Mayor?
All right. Ready to vote?
Let's give it up.
All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
We're on board. Anything we can do to help? Just let us know, please.
Item 10, consider approval of employee health insurance stop-loss contract for July 1, 2013 to June 30, 2014. Sponsor is Mr. Mike Davidson.
Mayor and councilmembers, as I, as I mentioned earlier, the city is self-insured for health insurance for our employees and retirees. Each year, we purchase stop-loss coverage to help protect the insurance fund from large claims on specific, so we purchase the stop-loss on every individual that's covered under the health plan. We have roughly 1,100 lives that are, that participate in our health plan and covered by the health plan. Last year, the stop-loss carrier that we've had in place for the last couple of years is a company called Highmark Insurance, and the quote we have from them this year to renew that policy would be roughly $213,947. It's roughly a $20,000 increase over the expiring premium. They charge us, would charge us $19.75 for every single contract and $47.26 for every family contract, but I would recommend approval and be happy to answer any questions about the insurance fund that I can.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments from council?
Is the increase, or most of the insurance companies kind of speculating what's going to happen January and raising rates now?
I think they're all trying to figure out what, where things are going to land come January, yes. So, I think all that kind of is a factor in this entire process.
Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. Item 11, consider awarding bid for new roof at the Depot. Leisure Services Department sponsor is Mr. Rick Woods.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We advertise and receive bids for a roof, re-roof, roof replacement at the Depot Museum.
Roof.
Roof, roof, re-roof. We received six bids, and we are recommending Tennessee Master Restoration as low bidder, meeting specifications. Recommend your approval and be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments?
Yep.
Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. Item 12, consider authorizing city manager to execute an agreement with Hall and Associates on the wastewater treatment plant permit negotiations.
Mayor and council, I'm seeking authorization for the city manager to enter into an agreement to retain Hall and Associates to advise us on our department on permit negotiations at our wastewater treatment plant. Terms of the agreement are on an hourly rate and not to exceed $25,000. We've used Hall and Associates in prior negotiations and would recommend your approval.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Item 13, consider awarding bid for annual inventory items. Water Quality Control sponsor Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, we have opened bids on our annual sort of inventory items we use throughout the year and put into inventory. We would recommend the low bidder meeting spec that's highlighted in yellow. I'd like to point out one thing, the, in 2011, there was the Reduction of Lead in Drinking Water Act passed, which basically dropped the definition of what lead-free means, and so when that happened, it goes into effect in January this year. So, that, that's driven all of the, all of the parts and pieces that are used in drinking water now that's made of brass has to be now below a certain level. So, what I want you to know about is basically, it drove our prices up, we think, by about 30% now on this bid, which turns out to be about one and a half pennies on our rate, and so I just wanted to pass that along.
For future reference.
That's interesting, though. Thanks for telling, letting us know that.
I think, I think he intends to pass it along at 1.5 cents.
It seems like we, every time we turn around, there's a new reg that's sort of just reaching and getting.
Someone's going to notice that their rate went up 1.5 cents. So, thank you.
Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? All right, seeing none, I think, I think we can vote. I don't know.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Sorry.
Look at Kathy.
That was lit up.
That was fun.
Way to go, Ray Darrell Riley.
I didn't realize I had that good of a fluke.
Yes.
All right, sorry. This is an additional item added to the agenda. Item 14, consider approval to purchase torque tube for the wastewater treatment plant. Sponsor is Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
I'm not sure if the council had the pleasure of knowing what a torque tube is. Okay, we've, we've done this over the years, so I'll show you. It's used at our wastewater plant and trains air and keeps the microorganisms moving, and one of those have broken, and so we need to replace the tube, and our people will take off all the paddles and everything. But, when we did the plant expansion back in 1997 and built the new half, part of the contract was to replace all the old tubes. We felt like it was a waste to replace tubes that may last another 20 years, and it wasn't going to do any damage if they did fail, and then we would just replace them one at a time as they fail. And so, over the years, they've failed and we've replaced them, and so this is the 11th out of the 12 old ones and that it's failed last week, so we need to go ahead and order another one and get the process started of getting it replaced.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions?
You'd be a good teacher.
Yeah.
All right, all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right, another additional item that was added. Item 15, consider awarding bid for building renovations for the Public Works Facility at 1115 East Spring Street. Subject to certification by Architect and negotiation of the contract. Sponsor is Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and council, we opened bids on the renovation this afternoon. The low bidder, Sergio, I think it's Sergio and Sons Construction, at $1,249,000. I'd like to recommend that be awarded, subject to the engineer certifying the bids, going through that process.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments?
Just hope it goes through.
Yeah.
I'm anxious to get it started.
We are, too.
Let's get moving. All right, all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. All right, this is the part of the meeting we like to open the floor, hear from citizens and our delegations, anybody who would like to come forward. Feel free, the floor is open. Yeah. I don't know, Mr. Davidson, you got up to speak and everybody walked out. Anybody got anything?
No, Alba's not here, so I don't know. I do have one thing I want to point out. Our Cookeville Police Department motor officers, they recently attended the Third Annual Music City Police Motorcycle Training Competition held in Nashville at the beginning of this month, and I'm just going to read some of this off to you. The event was hosted by Tennessee Highway Patrol and Cookeville Police Department Motor Units. The proceeds will benefit the middle and east Tennessee Concerns of Police Survivors. The event was held in the parking lot of Bass Pro Shop at Opry Mills. Training and competition was open to all certified police officers who ride motorcycles in the line of duty. Training consisted of challenging courses and obstacles designed to test the riding and operating skills of the individual officers. This is the second year the police department has co-hosted the event with the Highway Patrol, our police department, that is. There are approximately 56 entries in the event. Approximately 29 of the riders were in the novice class and 26 were in the expert class, and they, they came from across the state, the THP, Highway Patrol, Knoxville Police Department, Hendersonville, Murfreesboro, Franklin, Dixon County, also out of state, Fairfax County, Virginia, De Soto, Mississippi, South Haven, Mississippi, and it looks like even in Kansas. But, we had some results I wanted to read out to everybody. The results are as follows. The team slow ride competitions and the top five places were awarded, but Cookeville Police Department took second place overall, and the team members were Randy Brown, Calvin Anderson, Shannon Smith, and Anthony Leonard. And in the team competition, Cookeville Police Department also took second place. Those team members are Randy Brown, Calvin Anderson, Shannon Smith, Anthony Leonard. And the partner ride classification, looks like Cookeville Police Department took first, second, and third place. First place, Randy Brown and Anthony Leonard. Second place, Mitch Harrington and Ryan Moore. Third place, Calvin Anderson and Shannon Smith.
Don't you know there's going to be some smack talking between those guys?
Oh, yeah. And in the novice division, individual, first place went to Sergeant Mitch Harrington of Cookeville Police Department. Second place went to Lieutenant Randy Brown. Seventh place overall went to Glenn Ramsey. And in the expert division, individual, third place overall went to Shannon Smith. And the overall individual score, fifth place, was Calvin Anderson. So, I just wanted to tell all those guys, great job, congratulations, way to show them up. I also heard, last year, at the hog rally, we showed the hogs up, too, didn't we? So, good job, guys. Anything from anybody else?
Okay. All right, this meeting's adjourned.